Good morning and welcome to our November 5th Wayne County Board of Commissioners Agenda Review. We'll start out with indication be Commissioner Dotteri. The pledge be by Commissioner Mayo, Mr. Mayo will not be here today at 6:00. Does anyone want to leave? Commissioner Acker will be leading that.
Mr. Chairman, may I also want to introduce Vice Chairman.
He's at home recovering. I think he's in the short rows and getting ready to put the ashburners on, I think.
Yes, sir.
I know he's ready to get back normal. All right, I have a few more minutes. Mr. Hinkin, anything to discuss, just a bit?
No, sorry, no adjustments.
Okay. Do you want to go through the special presentation?
Yes, sir. Thank you. First, we will do the employee service pens for the quarter. Then we'll have our employees come stand in front of the Board of Commissioners. Second on that is an update on the Maxwell Center by General Manager James Wade. James will kind of give an update of what's happening with the holiday season and a couple of different awards that the Maxwell Center has worn, has been awarded. And then Don Willis will be here to discuss the Veterans Ride Promotion by GWTA.
Okay.
There's our questions and we'll have public comments.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If I might, in the agenda, we've got in here about the Southern Wayne Gym. Where is that on the agenda?
Unfinished business.
Unfinished.
Yeah, number one under.
Okay.
I can explain that.
Okay, you just didn't say schools in there.
No, I'm sorry, I'll explain that. So, this budget, there's a couple of budget amendments here. So it's doing a few things, which is why I put the description as bond projects. The first budget amendment, which is labeled number 179, I think I put the memo first and then the budget amendments. So number 179 is reallocating bond proceeds from the Grantham Sewer Fund, Grantham Sewer Bond Fund, where we had that remaining allocation left. And we're moving $200,000 to the Fiber Loop Project because they're going to go ahead and loop in the Dixie Trail Building and that should cover that. And then we're also going to, what we're proposing is to move $408,686. Nope, no, no, I'm sorry, I said that wrong. $608,686 to the Grantham Sewer Fund. And that...
That's your movement program.
Moving it from, I'm sorry.
Get it right.
Boy, I'm just messing this all up. So let's start over. The total would move...
Well, if you're confused, you know how we are.
No, this is terrible. So the total that we are moving out of the Grantham Sewer Fund is 608,686. I promise I prepared this. $200,000 of that is going to the Fiber Loop Project Fund for the Dixie Trail Building. $408,686 of that is proposed to go to the Southern Wayne Gym Project Building. These were all bond projects and we are able to reallocate from one bond project to another. So that is why I described it the way I did in the number one unfinished business. The second budget amendment, so you have several modifications behind that to your capital project ordinances. The Grantham School Sewer, the Fiber Optic Loop Project, and then the Southern Wayne High School. And then you have budget amendment number 180. Number 180 is doing the second piece of what the memo discusses, which is taking funds from the sales tax, the school sales tax fund, out of that 4.6 that we've talked about that was set aside. We're taking money from that fund and moving over to the Southern Wayne Gym Project Fund to complete the balance of the budget of that fund.
Question.
Yes, sir.
You said the school sales tax fund, this is already their money?
Correct.
Okay.
And so if you recall, we have an agreement where, you know, the debt service is paid for with school sales tax and lottery funds. But before that agreement, there was 4.6 million set aside for a project. At that time, it was Fremont Stars, but it had not been committed to a project yet. So this is coming out of that 4.6 million dollars. There had already been some money spent out of that for architect fees for Northwest and for Southern Wayne. But there was still some funds remaining and so we are taking funds out of that to finish out the balance of the Southern Wayne Gym Project Fund. And then once this budget amendment is approved, I have in the memo on page two, that that would leave that balance in that sales tax fund for a project for the schools at $1,566,356. The county manager has recommended that these funds be held in that fund until the Southern Wayne Project is complete in case they run into any change orders, things like that.
Because there is no other fund for them to draw down funding for that project except for the county. That is the only pot of money they have left as far as allocated funds.
Well, if they build a building in Wayne County, there's not a change, you'll already be the first.
Well, and that's kind of what we talked about based on the experience we've had with projects. So that this way, we've kind of got some reserves set aside for those purposes if that were to take place. And if not, then it can be reallocated upon completion of the Southern Wayne Gym Project.
I don't, Mr. Chairman, if I might, I don't want to beat up too much on this because this project is long overdue, I understand. However, it did bring up a lot of some issues. First issue was, as you are, as I go through the numbers for engineering fees, we had already paid some engineering fees and then there's additional engineering fees. I assume you all have totaled those up and seen that it runs about 12% for engineering fees. Evidently, we might need to share our negotiating abilities with the school board because that's substantially higher than what we have been paying substantially. In fact, it's a great deal more than what we pay. I think we generally are in the 8% range. The other issue is, all of a sudden, I'm beginning to get calls and pushback in regards to Southern Wayne, I mean, not Southern Wayne, but Spring Creek. Because Spring Creek High is evidently a long, long awaited need for some athletic facilities as well. And specifically a field house. But that said, this project is long overdue and we need to move forward with it. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I apologize for my confusion at the beginning. I believe we have it sorted out now, so thank you.
All right. Thank you, Al. Number two, unfinished business is a motion to approve request to rezone 29.05 acres of land near the intersection of Ruskin Road and Sleepy Creek Road from residential agricultural to light industrial in the Brogdon Township. And we'll have Mark Pope here. I think there may be some residents here as well, but I think there's been a good, we've worked with residents well on this moving forward. So we'll, you can approve that today.
Craig, just wanted to interject that we jumped down to unfinished business, but we will have appointments, or actual reappointments.
We got four reappointments.
I apologize.
No, 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 it came with the questioning, but I'm just...
All right. Then number three is motion to approve franchise agreement for non-emergency transport with North State Transport. Carol is handing that out now. I want to thank Dave Cutterback, our county attorneys, and also North State for getting this ready so quickly. We have also sent this to UNC Wayne for comment and we have not received anything yet, so we're assuming that everything is well. We're excited that if we approve this today, according to Dave's last email with North State, they will be moving into the old Jazz Building as of December 1. So hopefully, we talked about originally a 60 to 90 day process. It may be a quicker process than that.
When was this sent to the hospital?
At least October 28. So they've been aware also that we've had to have, we were pushing this forward and that we needed any comments or changes by yesterday.
You got no negative back from them?
Nothing negative from...
Well, then we'll assume it's positive.
We'll assume it's positive.
The closest franchise you've heard of is today, but then it'll have to be on at your next meeting as well.
Well, two votes on that, huh? Aren't they special?
But again, I really do appreciate the work that our EMS Director Dave Cutterback has done and also Boardman Andrew on this getting this ready and really expediting this.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I just want to make sure that this contract is basically for us limited from six...
P to 6A.
To 6A.
Yes, sir.
And all days Sunday. Okay. All right. And we will be monitoring it and see if the timeframes are correct. It may be adjusted at some point, but the board will know.
Yes, sir.
Will be involved in if it is adjusted.
Yes, sir.
And we do have the flexibility to adjust it.
Yes.
Top or down? I'm sorry.
Hold on.
What if we decided that we wanted to drop this franchise agreement? What's our out?
You don't have a break.
Just have it on. As far as the franchise...
Oh, you mean later on?
Yes, later on.
You have the ability to cancel it?
With 90 days notice or something like that?
60.
60 day notice.
And they do...
We don't have to give a reason?
No.
Good enough.
But I will say that we have vetted North State very well as well. So we're excited. We think that they are the right franchise for Wayne County.
But I didn't want to send the wrong message out that we want to get out of it before we get in.
Right.
But it's always good to know what your out is.
Then we, at 9:30 a.m., we have a public hearing to receive public comments on a request to rezone 152 acres of land at the intersection of Pecan Road and Mitchell Road from airport and residential agriculture to heavy industrial and light industrial in the Brogdon Township as recommended by the Planning Board. And Barry is here. I'll turn it quick.
Good morning. Yeah, this is a resounding request. The public hearing, of course, is scheduled for this morning. Part of the property will be, they're requesting to be rezoned to heavy industrial, that's about 120 acres. Light industrial will be about 32 acres. And the applicant is Case Farms. It is right across Pecan Road from the Case Farms property. We have sent out the notices and, you know, advertised. We haven't received any comments, but there is the possibility, of course, as with any public hearing, that you will have citizens here who may want to speak. But at this point, we haven't heard any positive or negative for this request. But I'm glad to answer any questions.
You've sent the letters and so forth and so on to all appropriate residences right around?
Yes, sir. We've sent letters out and we posted a sign on Mitchell Road and we posted a sign on Pecan Road as well. And advertised in the paper also.
Could they give any indication on how many new jobs that will create?
They have not. I think what they're doing, what I understand is they're just kind of looking at long-range future. I think initially, they're looking to just do some things like parking across there and then have some land for future needs if they need that. But at this point, we haven't seen or heard of any specific plans.
Okay. And we'll take action on this one today?
After the, after the...
Comments.
Thank you, Barry. Next is our consent agenda. Number one is applicants for elderly or disabled exclusion, which have been reviewed and recommended by staff. Number two is applications for disabled veteran exclusion, which has been recommended and reviewed by staff. Number three is application for property tax exclusion, again, recommended by staff. Number four is applications for present use value, which has been recommended by staff for approval. And then number five, budget amendments. Ms. Allison.
Yes, sir. Your first budget amendment begins on page 60 for the Health Department. They are anticipating and appropriating an additional $2,721 for the tuberculosis control Second budget amendment is for the library. They were awarded an exhibitor award at the Wayne County Fair and so they are anticipating and appropriating that award to their programs line item. For the Solid Waste Department, they are requesting to appropriate $23,000 in fund balance. They had a project, a shop expansion project ongoing at year end. They were planning to reuse some old garage doors and that has not worked out once the contractor came and looked at it. So they are actually going to have to purchase those doors and are going to request to use it from fund balance. And they do have sufficient fund balance to cover this.
Those are expensive doors, aren't they?
Yes, sir. They sure are. For the Maxwell Center, they are requesting to reallocate $8,162 from their regular part-time line item to hospitalization. They've had a change in personnel. The previous employee opted out of insurance. The new employee did not. So we have to cover those premiums. For the 4H Department, they are requesting to appropriate $898.59. This is for reimbursement on East Point Prevention Grant. I think following an audit, they discovered an error in the grant and they did have a small payback, so. We also have a reimbursement on the JCPC Grant. That is your next budget amendment for $1,636. They do audit those funds and determine if there's any that needs to be reimbursed in the next year. And so the therapeutic foster care program did owe some funds back. They pay that to us and then we turn around and remit it to the state. So that does not come out of county dollars. For the Services on Aging Department, they had a small decrease in their funds allocated from the Senior Center General Funds. And so that had a small county match attached to it, so they are adjusting those line items accordingly. $158 total. We have another one for Services on Aging. They had an increase in their East Carolina Council Senior Health Insurance Program line item. Total $2,909 and they are allocating those to salaries and travel and meals. For Social Services, they are requesting to increase the Crisis Intervention Program by $48,518. This is to match the latest funding authorization from the state and they do receive these periodically throughout the year. That's 100% state funded, too. For Services on Aging, they are requesting to reallocate salaries and wages from their extra help line item to the regular part-time line item. This is now someone that has been converted just from a temporary type position to a permanent part-time position. For the Library, they received a couple of donations totaling $215, so they are asking to anticipate and appropriate those dollars. And then your last budget amendment actually has the memo first, but it is budget amendment number 188. This is for the Edgewood Contingency Line Item. If you recall during the original budget, we budgeted the Edgewood School Funds totaling $587,000 in a contingency line item. We are not able to statutorily spend directly from a contingency line item. So we are asking to move that to a regular expenditure line item so that we can allocate that out to the schools. And that is all I have for you today.
There's no more questions on budget amendments. Number five, we'll go to number six. Motion to approve patient fees eligibility and bad debt write-off for the Wayne County Department as recommended, Health Department, but as recommended by the Wayne County Board of Health. And again, that is just their bad debt write-off policy and the change that they are asking for is on page 86 in red. This requirement of proof of income within 30 days applies to the following programs: family planning, child health, child special health services, and maternity. That's the only change they're asking for. Number seven, motion to approve the preliminary plat for Aaron's Place as recommended by the Wayne County Planning Board. And I'll have Barry come up.
All right. Aaron's Place Preliminary, this is a plat with 29 lots that are proposed. It's off of Leslie Road, if you're familiar with that, right there going out 70 towards the Rosewood area. It is on 17 acres. There was a preliminary approved for this back in the early 90s that included this part. Since then, several phases were recorded, but the rest of the subdivision just sort of sat over the years and since that time, it has since expired. So they are asking for reapproval of the rest of the subdivision so they can move forward with additional phases. Right now, there are no improvements that have been made to what you see before you today. They will be coming back at the late end of the final plat once the improvements are on the ground for final approval at some point in the future. So with that, Planning Board did recommend approval of this subdivision, this preliminary plat.
Next is number eight. Motion to approve sale of surplus property jointly owned with the town of Mount Olive, 126 East Slotemore Street in Mount Olive.
This is a prior foreclosure sale. The town of Mount Olive actually recently approved this, I believe, last month, maybe a little bit before. And they actually inadvertently recorded a deed to this person. So now we are jointly own it with a private citizen. So I think they forgot that they owned it with us. But it was $3,300. I actually worked with the attorney and we had this listed at a higher amount. We actually had it closer to about $10,000, $11,000 and we just could not find anybody to purchase it for that amount. So we tried to get a higher price, but the best we could get would be $3,300. I haven't received any interest in it. So if approved today, we would go ahead and execute a deed for our half over to the private citizen and then we would take half of the proceeds and it would be back on the tax roll as well.
A question came up last night at the Goldsboro City Council meeting. And I didn't know the answer to it, maybe you would. And the question was, in selling these properties at this lower amount, would that be considered a distress sale or would the tax value be reflected to this lower price?
No, I think it would still, the tax value would remain the same. I don't think these would be necessarily comparable sales when they go to a price just because it's coming from...
I assume they would consider that a distress sale. Okay. I thought so, but anybody listening might hear that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Number nine, consent, motion to adopt resolution designating agents for the North Carolina Division of Emergency Management. That basically lists myself and Assistant County Manager Chip Crumpler as the agents for the county. Number 10, motion to adopt resolution 201932, a resolution adopting the 13th Amendment to the Position, Classication, and Pay Plan for Wayne County, North Carolina. And Ginger is here if you have any questions. Really, it's a lot of cleanup, what she has done and eliminating positions that we don't have anymore or we're changing their titles. So I'll have Ginger come up if you have any questions.
Really, this was after an exhaustive and extensive review of the pay plan. We matched up two resolutions and positions that had been previously approved by the Board of Commissioners. We're not adding anything. We are simply updating and cleaning up the pay plan to reflect what has already been approved. The only exception are the title changes for EMS and those have been requested to line up with the state EMS titles.
Number 11, motion to establish a public hearing at 9:15 a.m. on November 19th, 2019 in the Wayne County Board of Commissioners Meeting Room in Wayne County Courthouse on Courthouse Square, Goldsboro, North Carolina, to receive public comments on the issuance of bonds pursuant to the request of WCFS Holdings, a Minnesota Limited Liability Company, the sole member of which is Wonderful Foundations, an Oregon nonprofit corporation described in Section 501(c)(3) of the Internal Revenue Code. Very simply, this is a company looking at setting a charter school in Wayne County and they're looking for, they have to get a resolution passed by the local government to authorize them to sell tax-exempt bonds. Is that a fair enough statement?
That is. It's very similar to the things that when you have approved a volunteer fire department borrowing money at a tax exempt rate, you know, they sent something that they wanted to, what they would ultimately want you to pass after the public hearing, if you would. And I told them they needed the language that we have insisted in that, that there's language in there, that the county has absolutely no liability on any of the debt.
And Andrew, just, this is where Wayne Prep is now.
So they're actually just buying out the note on Wayne Prep, basically. There's not a new school.
Okay. All right.
So just as a language wonderment, why wouldn't this have something in there that specifically says charter school? I mean, you know, I read across this, it looked like it could have been some, my selling stocks and bonds or whatever, but they didn't. I think for public consumption, and if it's, usually the news augurs, sometimes we'll print what's going to happen at our meeting the day or two before. And sometimes they print it in plain language, which sometimes does wonders for me and being able to understand it because it's printed at a fifth grade reading level. So sometimes for all of us to understand, should have just said what it was, charter school. Because I'm glad to hear it's replacing another charter school, not to speak for the school system. I may stand to be corrected, but each charter school has a tendency, has a potential to drain funds from the public schools. Because I'm not sure, I've been away from it so long. Because I'm not sure, I've been away from it so long, it seems like the public school may have to send money per pupil.
The pure people money follows.
Transfer to a child.
Right.
That is still.
And so while we're talking about breaking water for our schools, we're also talking about losing potential membership. So I'm glad to hear that they're just buying out one that's already here.
And it's K through eight.
Sir?
It's K through eight.
Eight through eight.
K through eight.
K through eight, I'm sorry, K through eight. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. So just, you know, for transparency and true understanding, when this is printed by us, approved by us, or whatever, it needs to say charter schools, and so the public will understand exactly what this is.
We can make that change, yes, sir. We were just using the wording that they sent us.
I understand that.
We'll make that change.
I can see this as that professional lawyer language. That's why I say we need it.
When it came in with the request, we had absolutely no idea what the original request was, so.
Thank you, that's feeding right into what I'm talking about.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we had to be very clear and plain, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Miss Jen.
Below the newsroom, I'm used to reading, trying to figure out exactly what it's saying. I don't want to be vague. Thanks, sir.
This could be a question for Mr. Parker or Mr. Neal. Is there a general statute that says this memorandum has to be worded?
No.
Okay.
But we will make those changes.
Thank you, sir.
When we do the public hearing. Motion to, number twelve, is motion to award asbestos inspection services related to the Hazard of Mitigation Grant Program acquisition and demolition to S and M and E Environmental Assessments East and Broling and Robertson. And Carol is handing out the corresponding paperwork, and Dave Harris is here, if you have any questions.
Is that, do you mean a question now?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure I got a, I'm not sure this is exactly this question, but I'll ask David. I was sharing somewhat vague terms, what a person called my phone one night and asked me, David, I'm always getting calls that I don't understand the nature of them sometimes, and don't understand the wording of them uptown. The overall dollars is coming to Wayne County as a result of storms and all these other things. If I understand it correctly, we were eligible for about $25 million. Is that the ballpark?
Yeah, about $26 million.
Twenty-six, okay.
From the CDVG Dr. program.
All right, that was $1 million, so $26 million. And we have allocated, obligated, promised out about sixteen of that $26 ballpark.
Approximately seventeen, yes.
Okay.
The state only awarded two-thirds, basically, of the initial allocation, and that's still the case.
Have we developed plans for that other nine or 10, whatever?
No. We haven't been given any guidance, any direction as to what activities would be eligible for the additional funding.
All right.
In other words, it's still, the state is still working on getting the initial funding spent, and obviously, the majority of that, eighty percent of it's going into housing. But in terms of the other part of Wayne County's allocation, that is still, you know, in the hands of the state. And it's the same way with the other three. Remember, there were four tier-one counties. It's the same with the other counties. Everybody only was awarded two-thirds of the initial amount, and all the efforts have been directed toward that first two-thirds, and the other one-third is simply sitting there.
Is it safe to assume or to hope that any promises made out of the North Carolina budget, this current budget, any promises made out of that budget will, will or will not impact that other nine or 10 million dollars that's promised to Wayne County?
We're not aware of anything that would affect it. It's simply still there. I would like to point out, one of the additional activities now that they're moving into is the CDVG Dr. buyout program. And in fact, we'll be meeting with some state officials as to how that will go about. They're going to manage it entirely, just like they do the other housing components. But that's money that will also come out of that additional one-third that's remaining. So they are making efforts in that regard, but there's not been any allocation directly to the county, saying, okay, look, you can now apply for these activities and et cetera.
So let me ask, let me ask this.
The state is taking it and making those decisions, kind of on an activity-by-activity basis.
So let me ask this question. In terms of that, those dollars that's left, Wayne County could be in a position to request dollars to do some preventive measures that could forestow, forestall the opportunity for folks' houses being flooded in the front end and out to prevent it from being a problem cure. Am I too vague in what I'm?
No, and that's just what you're saying, is one of the foundations of the program, mitigation, is undertaking mitigation activities to lessen the impact of future storms and flooding.
That mitigation word always sort of tosses me around as to, thank you for expanding on that a little bit, because mitigation, arbitration, you know, all these words have got that in it on them, sometimes can toss you as to what the folk are trying to get. But you answered, you gave to the heart and soul, I think, of what my question and concern is. And a little bit later on this morning, if you're still here, I might need to ask you something else related to that. But thank you, sir, I'm in the ballpark.
I want to make sure we understand, that the remaining one-third that was not allocated directly to the county, the change that's taken place from the time that we first submitted applications in September 2017, is that the program has become a completely state-managed program. That additional third for Wayne County is simply established, you know, by the guidelines and the state's action plan to be spent in Wayne County, not necessarily to be spent by Wayne County or City of Goldsboro. So that one-third, a hundred percent of it, the state can make the decision as to how they're going to spend it within Wayne County, or they may allow the county to recommend proposed projects at some point. I just want to point that out. I don't want to create any expectations, and hey, look, there may be another, you know, $8 million that we could access for mitigation and so forth. It is 100% up to the state of North Carolina as to how the money's spent, whether they do it entirely among themselves or by themselves, or whether any local jurisdiction's involved.
Thank you, sir, because that, a couple of important keys there.
Mr. Chairman.
For Wayne County.
Seems like you've almost opened up a can of worms here. Now, am I understanding you correctly, out of the dollars that were allocated of $26 million, the state only allocated us to use two-thirds of that and held back one-third?
Yes.
Why would they hold back one-third of much-needed dollars for our residents in Wayne County to be used as they so determine at some later date?
Because it's their program. And I don't mean to be evasive about it, or to be funny, it's just.
But, but the need was greater than what was allocated for us to use, but one-third of those dollars are actually being held back by the state. Am I correct?
Yes.
Now, I mean.
And the only.
I've got a real problem with that.
Yeah, the only piece we've got is about.
We've got people that are in great need, that took years to finally get some dollars, and now to find out that one-third of those dollars have actually been held back by the state. They didn't allocate it to be used for its, in my opinion, its intended purpose. And I hear the quietness and the crickets that are in the room. That really upsets me. Thank you very much.
Just to, just to, one second, I'm sorry. Let me finish with that. The very reason that I initially asked, and told you I got a telephone call, a person who sometimes attends our meeting burned my ear for 35, 40 minutes about this very subject, and what he perceived as some vague, not on Wayne County's part, but on the broader issue of what we're talking about right now, that dollars can be held and disseminated in a way that lends itself to questions. It's all like what my colleague here, and not specifically what he said, but in that same family of questions, but that's good. It's good for discussion, because, you know, it does open up some other questions. Thank you, sir, but not right now.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a problem with this discussion, but this has nothing to do with this motion before us. I mean, we need to take care of this motion, and then, then before we want to have this discussion, that's fine. But we're mixing things up, and the general public that's listening may not understand all this. We need to, we need to decide whether we're going to act on this motion just before us, and then we want to have this discussion, that's fine.
And pardon me, sir, but I would appreciate the fact that the questions that I was asking of him, I'm not sure that we're in such a rush that we couldn't attend to that, and thank you, sir, for doing that. We'll be back to it though.
Thank you, David.
Craig? Is there any other questions on the asbestos motion? And again, you should have the paperwork confirmed.
In fact, we received five proposals, and we're recommending three of the firms.
The question also, if there does need to be more discussion with Dave, would you like, he's not part of the agenda, he was just here to discuss the consent agenda piece. We can ask Dave to stay for commissioners' comments, and then you can ask him questions at that time, if the chair so chooses.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we do that at a later time.
Or we want to put him on the next agenda?
Maybe so.
We can, we would ask Dave then to come back at our November 15th meeting, and we will have him as a place on the agenda.
I'd give you update on HMGP as well as DR.
And the one-third of the money.
If you're not going to be here later on, monitor the video of what this meeting ends at, because I think this stuff's going to come up again later on today, so just monitor what's.
And furnish to Dave, too, but to give him time to prepare. You know, this is kind of.
Right.
No problem.
We'll make sure he's here, thank you, Dave. Then we have new business, number one, motion to declare property at 109 Orman Avenue as surplus property and donate said property to Downtown Goldsboro Development Corporation for adaptive reuse. Again, this is the Will Sullivan Building that is owned by the county. As you are aware, we are in the process of changing, that's where probation is held. We have some probation offices there with the renovations that we're having, and also to the John H. Bell Building, also to the Board of Elections Building, where we're going to move, the old Board of Elections, where we're going to move probation. We'll have that old building that we will have no use for at this point. And Downtown Goldsboro has an interest in obtaining the building for its adaptive reuse program. So if the board is so willing to approve, we would then begin working with them on the process of transferring it to them.
Mr. Chairman, I do note in this write-up here that the DGDC is a property tax-paying entity, so immediately, it would go back on the tax rolls upon our transferring. Is that correct? Well, that's what it says here.
They are, I don't know if.
Until next year.
Well, next year. Okay. Good enough.
But again, we don't really know the right process, because we still will have some use out of it until we can move in, probably after the first of the year with probation, but we want to transfer it as quickly as possible.
Agreed.
Okay. Number two is presentation of Finance Director Allison Speight, her quarterly financial statement for Wayne for fiscal year 2019 through September 30th. So Allison will do that. And then number three, Allison will then do the quarterly financial presentation for our TDA, our Tourism Development Authority, through September 30th. Then we'll have county managers' comments, Board of Commissioners' committee reports, closed session, and then adjournment.
How are we up on closed session?
Probably don't have time.
Take a little break.
Yes, sir.